Town of Fairfax Planning Commission Meeting, August 21st, 2025. Apologies, we had a couple of technical difficulties getting set up, but we are moving ahead now. This meeting is being held in person at the Fairfax Women's Club, 46 Park Road in Fairfax. It's also being held virtually on Zoom and broadcast on Channels 27 and 99 of Marin TV. To participate in the meeting virtually, join the Zoom webinar and use the raise hand feature to provide verbal public comment. On Zoom, you can find our webinar ID and you can find the telephone dial-in number on the agenda. Okay. Call the meeting to order and get a roll call.
Okay, Swift?
Here.
Kelly?
Here.
Bayla?
Present.
Petrone?
Here.
Jansen?
Here.
Newton?
Here.
Chair Pfeffer?
Here.
Thank you. And can I get a motion to approve the agenda?
Motion to approve the agenda?
Yeah, and just a correction on the agenda that the minutes are for July 17th, not the 18th.
Okay.
And I second.
Second with that amendment to the agenda. And I think we can just do a voice vote for this. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? And the motion passes unanimously. Meeting protocol, the chair shall maintain order at the meetings in accordance with Robert's Rules of Order, and the planning commission has the responsibility to be a model of respectful behavior in order to encourage community participation and citizen input at planning commission meetings. The planning commission and the audience are expected to refrain from using profane language and/or ridiculing the character or motive of planning commission members, staff, or members of the public and to maintain the standards of tolerance and civility. All interested persons are invited to participate in public hearings. In order to give all interested persons an opportunity to be heard and to ensure the presentation of all points of view, members of the audience should, one, limit your presentation to three minutes; two, provide comments by email as described on the agenda; three, state your view and concern succinctly; and four, submit any new documents to the planning staff first directly or via email at planning@townoffairfax.org to be entered into the record. First thing we have on the agenda is public comments on non-agenda items. Anyone who wishes to adjust the planning commission on matters not on tonight's agenda but within the jurisdiction of the planning commission can do so by email via Zoom in the manner described above or in person here. Presentations will be limited to three minutes. Anyone in the room? Give it a second and see if we get any raised hands on Zoom.
I do not see any raised hands on Zoom.
Okay. We'll close public comment on non-agenda items and move ahead with our agenda. We have no consent calendar items tonight. Our first public hearing item is 41 Olima Road, application number 2520.
So, the project proposes to remodel a portion of a bedroom to create a new approximately 41 square foot full bathroom. Exterior changes to the house include the removal of an existing bedroom window on the upper floor of the western side of the house and the patching of the opening and the installation of a new window in the upper floor of the western side of the house in the new bathroom in a slightly different location than the removed window. The new bathroom window would match the existing window. It would be located next to. And some new cabinetry would be installed in the remodeled bedroom as well, but no other changes to the house or the property are proposed. The project requires approval of a conditional use permit for the physical improvement of a property in the RD 5.5-7 zone that does not meet the minimum size and width requirements based on its slope. The project conforms with applicable general plan policies, the residential land use designation of the site, and the applicable objective zoning standards of the Fairfax zoning ordinance. The proposed project would not constitute a grant of special privilege, nor contravene the doctrines of equity and equal treatment. It would not cause a nuisance or adverse physical environmental effects to abutting properties, but would rather result in equal or better development of the premises than would otherwise be the case. No comments or project-specific conditions were received from town departments or outside agencies. There is a recommended change to the resolution that was made by Commissioner Newton, and that's on page two. And that is to strike the, on paragraph D. It's to strike the first clause. So, it's paragraph D on page two, the first clause that says refer to the response to paragraph A above. That would just be deleted. And then that paragraph D would start with the proposed blah, blah, blah. So, that's the recommended change. And with that recommended change, staffer recommends the planning commission move to approve application 2520 by adopting resolution number 25, 2025-20 with the recommended change.
Thank you. Do we have any questions from Commissioners' first town staff? Seeing none, do we have any public comment?
And I will tell the seeing none in the room. I will ask the public online, if there's somebody who would like to comment on this item, go ahead and raise your hand. It's an icon in the middle center of your screen. And I see no hands raised online.
All right. I'm happy to close public comment. Just tell the applicant if you want to say a couple of words. You know, we'll hold off for a few more seconds, but I think we're otherwise ready to move on. Okay, we'll close public comment and bring this item back to the commission for discussion. Does any commissioner have any discussion items? Or want to go ahead and move this movement with a motion?
I'll make a motion.
Oh, go ahead.
Motion to approve resolution number 2025-20 of the Fairfax Planning Commission approving application number 25-20 for a conditional use permit for the remodel of the single-family residence at 41 Olima Road to create a new full bathroom.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion from Commissioner Newton and a second from Commissioner Bayla. We can do a voice vote on this. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any commissioners opposed? None. The motion passes unanimously. I'll let the public know that there is a 10-day appeal process for this resolution approval. Information on the appeal can be obtained from town staff. And thank you. And thank you, Cara. Okay, and we can now move ahead with item two.
So, we've been advised by the town attorney that Commissioner Jansen has an issue with this application. I've been advised not to give the staff report until he explains the issue to you and you guys decide how to proceed.
All right. Okay, that's unusual, but that's. The, upon reviewing the drawings, and first of all, I'm happy that we see this comeback, that it can be resolved. Upon reviewing the drawings, I noticed that the architectural drawings look a little different from the other drawings. And today I just took a second look at it. And it is my understanding from the notes that are in item two of this application that the owner uses basically the exemption that if you built your own house, you don't need an architect, you don't need a contractor, you can self-perform. And that's the good law that it's that. However, it appears that the owner is an LLC, a limited liability company, and that exception does not apply to LLCs specifically for, that's what LLCs are for. So, that's confusing. There's always to solve it, I presume, but that makes it very difficult for me because that means the way we have it in front of us technically is not, what's the right word? It's not valid, it's not compliant. So, we, it's hard for me to imagine how we can make a motion on a drawing set that doesn't comply with the minimum requirements. That's my concern. It's, I'm not a lawyer, it's a legal thing, but in the context, I think it is important. And so, that's my concern. I would think it needs counsel to explain whether, I could be wrong, I don't know, but I'm working in the profession and that's why I got stuck. So, that's my message. And regardless of this, I think it might, let me add that to it. It might still be useful. Whatever the commission thinks we should do, it might still be useful to look at it for its merits because I understand that there's a lot of interest to move this forward. So, that's where I got stuck.
Well, I want to say thank you. One of the reasons why it's great to have various expertise on the commission to be familiar with this issue. What I would personally, and I'm happy to hear thoughts from other commissioners, want to take a look at is if there's any reference in resolution to our finding that the project is in compliance with all state laws. This a, you know, the requirement that you referenced that where there's an exemption for not having a state certified or licensed architect do your drawings, but there's an exempt, but that only applies to owners who are individual natural persons. Do you happen to know of and where that's, where that is?
You mean what's particular in the code?
Well, no, not in, maybe in our code or in, but just if it, oh, it's in.
It's state code, yeah, it's state law. And it's not so, I guess it's not so important regarding architecture, but it's also regarding contracting.
Yeah.
Go ahead, I'm sorry.
Yeah, and so that comes right from the, let me go there. Right, there is a questionnaire, so that is the part two of the whole thing. I started to read that there are questionnaires to the planning director where some of these issues are discussed. And in that sequence, if you read that through, the owner wants to be the design builder of this project as an LLC. And that's where it goes a little wrong. And then oddly enough, the drawings do not indicate who created the drawings. So, that's where the whole mystery started. But anyway, that, it's state law. And I might be wrong, I might be right, but that's my understanding.
So, there's, on the drawings, there's an architect listed.
There's not. The drawings are, it's a compilation of different things. Some of them are from the prior architect, some of them have an other source, but we do not know.
So, on S 1.0?
That's structural, yeah. Structural is stamped and signed.
And that's.
Civil is stamped and signed. That's the consulting engineer, DAC. That's the structural, I understand. And we have Wildscape as the civil engineer. So, those both have their seal on their drawings. It's the architectural drawings. Yeah, and then there is, and then there is the divine associates, but that is the prior architect. And so, there's another thing we don't understand. The rendering comes from divine. But I think it's not so much, it's the precedence, right? And then what makes it really hard is if you look at the cover sheet, and that is part of the narrative of the questions to the planning director, the cover sheet does not list an architect, does not list a structural engineer, does not list a geotechnical engineer. It does, it does not, not the one we have. And so, so, so that, but so there, we're looking at this document and that's what we have in front of us. And so, there's something wrong with the document.
Chair?
Yes, please.
Could I ask Planner Neil, did the town attorney provide any guidance for the planning commissioner in this regard? It sounds like maybe.
This was just brought to the planning director's attention, I think, what, two hours before the meeting? An hour before the meeting? And so, I called her from this building before the meeting started and she said she doesn't know, she needs to do some research on it.
In light of that, I'm wondering, Chair, if it might be prudent to proceed with questions and answers and comments, but ask the applicant for approval to.
She recommended not to proceed with it and to continue.
Well, I'm just saying, continue it, continue the decision for another month, but have the hearing, which has been noticed, so that if there are any other issues that might need resolution.
I'm not arguing with you. I just asked her and she said, I would not recommend that. If we need, if this issue is really valid and we need to do legal research, I would not recommend doing anything on the item. That's what she, that was her response.
Well, then, I would recommend we continue this at the urging of the town attorney over.
Can we?
Is that, is that the feeling, is that what you got from her too? You talked to Janet too, didn't you? No, I'm talking to Jeff.
I did not talk to her about that specific issue, so. I think if the other commissioners are okay with this, we can ask for a five or 10-minute break and we can try calling Janet right now having questions and just seeing how much we can move forward because I, I don't want to, you know, act in opposition to the guidance from the town's attorney, but, you know, I, it is always good to get the hearing done and make this go forward. And I just wanted to, I, I think if we can get Janet on the phone, helpful to ask, can we add conditions to a resolution?
I think that would be a good idea for the chair to do with staff on this and we take a break and then we continue the discussion after the break if you've had a chance to talk to the town attorney.
Yeah. Yeah. Commissioner Kelly?
I'd just like to add a little context to the issue that Commissioner Jensen was bringing forward. And note to the rest of my colleagues that the intent of that requirement by the state is all about safety. And this project specifically is peculiar in its need to be safe.
Yeah, I mean, my estimation of a policy reason would be somebody is, the state is more comfortable if the person building it is going to live in the house. But if the other commissioners are okay, I would like to take at least a five-minute break and I'll go with Jeff and call Janet and see if we can get her on the line.
Okay.
Can you note for the Zoom audience?
We're going to take a quick five-minute break to check in with the town attorney and we'll be back. Thank you.
Okay, we are back from our break and I would like the commission to have further discussion on, we've not been able to be in touch with the town attorney. The latest we heard was the town attorney wants, or says there would need to be more research on this and so would otherwise recommend continuing without discussion. I understand the caution. I, however, personally don't understand what the risk is for having a discussion and no action, but I'd like to hear the thoughts on the commission otherwise on whether we need to continue this without a discussion, whether we have a discussion and make a decision after discussion about whether to continue it or anything else. Yes, Commissioner Swift?
So, I'm disappointed that, you know, we're addressing this at this point in time with it, with this application. But I also don't see the merit in having a discussion or getting questions answered now, but still having to come back and reschedule this formally. So, if we're going down that path, then I think we should just continue the entire item and not have the discussion or the questions answered and do it all at one meeting.
May I ask a question?
Yes.
Do we need the applicant's permission or approval to continue this item?
I don't think so. This is a legal issue. We, the attorney's advised you that they can't give you advice right now on this issue. So, I don't know, what's your take on that, Jeff?
Well, we wouldn't recommend the planning commission take any action on it, so.
Right, my question is, can we ask the applicant, if they're here, whether they would be willing to allow for this continuance tonight? So that, you know, that's just taken off the table.
Well, I mean, it's, my, my thought on the matter is there are a few different things that could happen. Either we try and continue it without the applicant's agreement, which is a decision by the planning commission that I assume is also appealable. We have a discussion about it and not take any action, which again, if we're still continuing it at the end without the applicant's agreement, I assume that the applicant can appeal that to the town council.
Continuance couldn't be appealed.
If they agree to it, it can't be appealed.
The way it's normally worked here is if, if the commission is, is going to continue something, they ask the applicant if they're agreeable. And if the applicant says no, they would prefer to have a decision. That's the way it's worked. Then the commission takes, makes a decision without continuing it if they're not willing to agree to the continuance.
If I could follow up? Usually, it's because there's some time constraint after application filing date under which we need to have a decision made that compels us to ask the applicant for their agreement. So, what I'm suggesting is that we ask the applicant if they would agree to the continuance until next month to help resolve this question. And then if they don't agree, we would bring it back and discuss our next step at that point.
Are there? Yep. Unless anybody strongly disagrees with Commissioner Newton's plan, I think I'm seeing a bit of consensus on an initial first step right here. Okay. We would like to ask the applicant now if you would agree to a continuance until the next month on this item due to advice from the town attorney to the planning staff and the board that there is a risk and a reason not to hear the item tonight.
All right. I'm the applicant and I'm asking Tristan to speak on my behalf. Thank you.
So, my name is Tristan Warren. I'm an architect who lives in town. I'm a friend of Richard's. He called me, I just came down from having my dinner. Okay, a couple of things. First of all, I've heard the word architect being bandied about. This is an exempt project for the California Architects Act. It does not need an architect's stamp and signature. So, let's get that clear right now, okay? Secondly, Richard signed and sealed the documents, did he not, Linda?
There seems to be a, like an electronic signature.
Yes. There's no architect. Did the town not, does the town not take electronic signatures? Because I've used electronic signatures in the past with my stamp and seal.
I think it's either way, we understand the point.
The point I'm making is, is that somebody has taken authorization for these documents. Okay? They've signed their name on this, regardless if there's an LLC named on this. Now, I don't know how Fairfax does business, but in a lot of other municipalities that I do business in, I have LLCs that I work with when I'm doing development. Their names are often on the documents, as are mine. Richard's name is clearly on the document in a signature format. So, my question is, is that sufficient for the town to proceed? This project has been going on for eight months. As Linda stated, we're very close to the end of the 30-day allowed period for the town to review this, and yet we're going for a continuation. My friend who called me out of my dinner, asked me to come down because he was anxious, because he's at the end of his financial rope on this and we need to move forward with this.
Excuse me. The question, I'm sorry you had to leave your dinner to come here, I really am. And the question was raised about the applicability of the allowance for an LLC as the owner of the property. And our town attorney does not have an answer for the planning commission tonight. Let me finish. So, what we're asking the applicant is very, that's all we're asking. Would you be willing to agree to a 30-month continuance to our next planning commission meeting?
And I believe the answer is no, because.
If that's the answer, then I think we can come back to ourselves and talk about how we're going to proceed now, given that that's your response.
May I say something?
Sure. Okay. Who are you?
My name is Blaney White. I'm with Cross Country Mortgage. I'm the lender on this project.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. There's only one reason this project is in an LLC, and it's for the purposes of the loan. This build is for Richard. This is his dream home. And with an eight-month timeline, we have stretched Richard into potential financial ruin, okay? So, this loan is only good for 12 months with a one-month continuance on the loan itself.
I'm sorry, no matter how much you talk right now, you're not going to convince us because we need to rely on the advice of our attorney, which is why we're asking, let me finish, which is why we're asking for the continuance. If a month-long continuance is not appropriate, maybe a shorter continuance if we're available to come back to a meeting, a special meeting to hear this further, we would have to give our attorney a couple of weeks to look into this and get back to us. But what I'm saying is, we're not going to be able to make a decision about this tonight because we don't have our attorney's advice, okay?
Respectfully, Mimi, I understand and I appreciate that you've been an advocate for these other projects. I can see you want to see things go through and I appreciate that. I just need to say that this particular waiting now, it's going to push us into the winter months. So, I just have to ask Robert Jansen, I just need to ask, since this has been going on for almost nine months, why is it just coming to our attention two hours before the meeting that we waited nine months?
Ma'am, that is inappropriate. Could you please, I think.
Excuse me.
A close comment at this point, because this is not, this is not how this is supposed to be run.
I will pause the meeting if we need to, if we can't refocus because first, just want to say one thing, we, as commissioners, don't get anything before the agenda is made public, so.
And we understand that.
We have it over a long weekend. And to Commissioner Newton's point, we are just trying to get the limited question on what, whether or not the applicant wants to agree to a continuance. If the applicant does not want to agree to a continuance and the commission moves forward with further discussion and has public comment, there will also be an opportunity to explain why the commission should make a decision instead of continuing the item without agreement or not hearing it or coming to the decision to not approve the resolution as is. And, you know, before we bring it back, one last thing I want to say is very sympathetic to the cost of building in. very sympathetic to the cost of building and the timeline being a huge factor. But it does not help the applicant if there is some technical issue with the resolution and somebody else wants to get the property cheap and says now they've invested more money into it. I can appeal it. This wasn't approved properly because the state code says a license is not required if the owner builder does the work themselves and they say and justify that owner builder does not qualify if the property is owned in an LLC and not by an individual person. I I can't make that call. Their town attorney has not made that call. That's why the town attorney is advising caution. So I think happy to hear another another quick answer to on whether or not the applicant is agreeing to a continuance and we can decide here what our availability is before the next month. But yes, Linda.
I just wanted to say that Kara did go back and and the the building is available on September 4th. So you could, if you were all agreeable, you could and your and a quorum is available, quorum of you are available to attend, you could continue it to 9:04 September 4th.
Okay.
That wouldn't be a whole month.
Before we ask the applicant to give us their decision, do commissioners know offhand whether or not they're available on September 4th?
I am.
I am as well.
I am as well.
Okay, we would have a quorum on September 4th.
Can I ask the board one follow up question? This might also go to Linda Neal. If the applicant changes the letterhead on this, even though it's still applied for by a LLC as in the owner, but the 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 letterhead, the title block says something other than that, then there's no problem, correct?
We don't know the answer to that question.
That's what we want to find out from the town attorney.
So so but sorry, I I missed the first part of the discussion. So if I'm to help him, I need to understand. So an LLC cannot be the owner of a single family property.
But what we're saying is, or what I'm saying is, I don't know, Commissioner Jansen's experience is that it does not qualify and right now I'm in the state statutes because that's what I do professionally and it just says owner builder. It doesn't say that what counts as an owner builder. There's often in statutes, things that say for this purpose, the resident or property owner or things like that can mean a natural person, a trust, an LLC or not. And I don't, I have not seen that here. I'm that's why we need our town attorney's guidance, but Commissioner Jansen has.
Yeah, let me clarify. There's a lot of words. So yes, an LLC can be an owner, of course. An LLC can be a developer, of course. A design builder is a different thing. And so in order to be a contractor, you typically need a license. And in order to be an architect, you need to be licensed. And so the the design builder homeowner exception typically applies to a natural person. Now, I am not a lawyer, so I have limited knowledge. But but that is where where there's a flag for the commission. And let me finish. And and so the thing is that looking at the documents, they don't add up because different documents say different things. And that by itself, so there's one thing is the content of those documents, but that package has a problem. And what is exactly the problem is as what our chair explained is something that legal needs to look in deeper because we cannot make the answer here on the on the dais.
And let me just add a bit, just a quick color. So the way that I'm reading the statute is the rule is you need a licensure. And then there's an exception. An owner builder is exempt from licensure, but there are limitations. A license is not required if the owner builder does the work themselves or through their own employees with wages as their sole compensation in the structure is are not intended for sale. And the owner builder contracts with property properly licensed subcontractors. And if the owner builder contracts with a general building B contractor.
Is is that a Fairfax or is that the?
That's the California Department. It's coming from the California Buildings and Professions Code in section 7400.
So the relevant code here is actually the California Architects Act. And there are certain buildings that are exempt. Okay, a single family, two story with basement is an exempt project. Okay, I'm a licensed architect. I had to read this to maintain my license. Okay, there are also up to four units in a townhouse configuration. So this is the California Architects Board. This is what regulates the stamping and signing for an architect, not a builder. So that's my question. That's what I'm trying to clarify.
Well, and I think one of the solutions is if we can continue this till the 4th, that the planning department and the town attorney would be working with you to talk about what the solution is to make sure that on the 4th, we have all our i's dotted and our t's crossed.
And I'm fine with that, Mimi. I'm not sure my client is. I understand that. I'm just trying to work it out for him. I'm just a little agitated because I had to drop my dinner and it's not your fault. I know that. I'm just trying to deal with my own kind of frustration about that. But I just want to make sure that at the end of the day that we're not, and I get it, you can't, you can't go forward because there's a discrepancy right now. But I I am concerned that this continuance is costing my friend time and stress and things like that. And I wish that it had been figured out and this was clear before we all ended up here.
I certainly would have wished that too. But this is just the way it plays out. And I understand that's a hardship, but it's very important.
And just a quick note, the reason why section 744, 7044, if you're curious, in the Business and Professions Code applies is because when we are granting approval, we need to say that the project is not in violation of state. We can't approve something that would be against state law. But yeah.
Okay, respectfully, fair enough. But I am a licensed contractor. I have been for 20 years in in Marin. And I'm really frustrated right now because I'm not understanding why the attorney didn't didn't come up with this in the last 30 days. Why is this coming to fruition right now in two hours before the meeting? This is just not fair. And I am at my wit's end right now. I wish I got up here wanting to be positive and polite with everybody. But I am about to be in financial ruin. And this has gone on for way too long. I just need to need you guys to understand that. Thank you. And I do agree to the continuance to for the 4th of September. Is that the date?
Yes, and we will hold further discussion. I appreciate, we very much understand your position and the difficulty this puts you in. And we are all, we are really only asking for the continuance is because we think that is the best way for everyone involved to proceed. And we're continuing it. We can't have a further discussion tonight. We're happy to come back on the 4th if that works.
But you need to, someone needs to make a motion in a second.
And again, you know, the town attorney does not normally review these projects that come in unless there's a question because that just costs people money and there usually isn't.
Is there a reason the town attorney is not here tonight?
Yeah, the town attorney doesn't normally attend planning commission meetings. We've, I think, in the four years I've been here, we've had questions for them during a meeting five times.
Fair enough.
But again, I would suggest reaching out to town staff in the morning, seeing if they've heard from the town attorney and asking, you know, for an expected timeline. The town attorney is not going to be able to give you guidance, but they, you can certainly ask them to clarify exactly what you would need to have the town attorney be comfortable with us proceeding.
I'll make a motion to continue this item to September 4th.
Second.
Going to call rule.
Yep.
Swift.
Yes.
Kelly.
Yes.
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 Petrone.
Yes.
Jansen.
Yes.
Newton.
Yes.
Chair Pfeffer.
Yes. Motion passes unanimously.
Thank you for this and I apologize.
Yes. Thank you.
Oh, yeah. The other thing that I'm worried about is when I look at the county, it's listed as being owned by the LLC. So like he can't just say he's the owner. He got the loan. Or he might need to, I don't know. Yes. But his firm, so how hard is it going to be? Why didn't they just do that if that's the standard? I don't know.
Can we move forward, the commission on the minutes? Did commissioners have any comments to the minutes?
I do.
Other than.
Oh, other than the day.
The day, yes.
Yeah. I had some comments on the 63 Bellinas item, page three on the motion. The planning commission's deliberations included the desire for a third color to be introduced into the design and that the applicant and staff would work together on that color and design and staff would administratively approve the design. There's nothing in the discussion on on the motion that speaks to that. It says the resolution with amendments and corrections. And I think that's key to that discussion of that item. So I would like to change that to read in that section as amended and corrected by the planning commission, which sets forth, change that to as amended to direct the applicant to work with staff to introduce a third color to the design with administrative approval by staff. The planning commission which sets forth. So we have in there why we're amending it and there were no corrections to that resolution. So I think it's clear in there why the amendments and the discussion that we had.
The only note I would have on that one, I'm, you know, happy to go to the next one is because the title on that request for a design review permit says principal planner gave the staff report recommending the approval of the project with the condition that the final color palette include more colors than the two being proposed. You know, I don't think an issue to add that to the resolution, but just would want the language to match. So it says the as amended and corrected by the planning commission, including the condition that the final color palette include more than the two proposed, just so that the.
And the staff may would make the administrative decision on that.
Anything else?
That was it.
I'll move to approve the minutes of the Thursday, July 17, planning commission meeting.
I'll second.
Oh, sorry, with the change reflected by Commissioner Swift.
Thank you.
I'll second again.
Okay, we can do a voice vote on this. All in favor?
Aye.
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 Aye. Any opposed? Any abstain?
Abstain. Not here.
Thank you. A motion is approved. All in favor except for Commissioner Kelly who abstains. And we are on to Commissioner, what's planning director's report before Commissioner.
I can tell you about the BPAC. So the council established a bicycle and pedestrian advisory committee at the, I don't know if it's the last meeting, no, it was the last meeting. And they went for a seven person committee, which is kind of on the large side with four alternates. So there'd be kind of 11 people that would be on the committee. So we're going to figure out how to fit them in this. Including the audience. So and also they appointed Mayor Blash to be kind of a council liaison. So we're in the process of setting that up and and we're having our first meeting within the next couple of months. And we're also going to be hiring a consultant. So we're entertaining bids from consultants right now. We haven't selected anybody yet. But we will keep the planning commission apprised of that. And at some point we'll be bringing in items to you to for discussion purposes related to the bicycle and pedestrian system.
Is there any intended purposeful interface between the two bodies, between us and them?
I know. I think just the planning commission, since you have a kind of a global view of the the town and the general plan, there's definitely a connection to the circulation element. So we'll want to, we'll want to get your input from that perspective, kind of a policy level.
Anything else to note?
That's, I'll leave it simple.
Do commissioners have comments or requests?
I do. So can you provide clarification on the mapping for the northern spotted owl? I've asked a couple of times on that as to whether we got confirmation from Audubon that the mapping from last year was still current that we use this year. I know nesting season is over, but it's also since the town has now made the northern spotted owl or town bird that I think it's it's important to keep up with that. So that's one for you.
Yeah, we did a, we have asked them a couple of times for their maps and if they're current. And I don't think they've updated them since those maps from last year. And I don't, I don't think they necessarily do that every year. But maybe Linda can provide additional information.
We've asked them for a map and all they will give us right now, because they haven't updated the map, is they give us a huge list of property addresses that are within a quarter mile. We're able to, you know, if we have a project, we put it into the list. And if it shows up, then we know it's within a quarter mile, but we don't know where the nest is and we don't have, the maps we have don't show where the nests are. They're just a circle in an area of streets. So that's all we've got right now.
Right. And I understand that they're doing it differently and you have the list of the properties. My question is whether what was provided last year is still current. My understanding is, and I don't know if.
Our understanding it is, is that it?
So you've got confirmation from Audubon that it is still current.
Kara called whoever was supposed to be responsible for answering that question. I wasn't the one that made the call and she said it was verified that that is current. They haven't made changes to it.
Okay, all right. Because I know we've been in a position in the past where we had the same information for several years and never had it updated. So I just want to make sure that.
And we're still using the same map that we've, yeah.
Yeah. Thank you. So my other one.
I'll just say to finish off. So it is one of the things that's out of our control, though, because it's, you know, it's the Audubon Society. We don't direct their work. So it would be, I mean, so I would encourage anybody that sees spotted owls to kind of contact them directly and kind of.
Yeah, I understand. I just, I understand. Just with past practice where we've had the same mapping for several years, just getting confirmation from someone at Audubon to say, yes, this one is still applicable for this nesting season and the same thing for next nesting season. Okay, then the other one is on the general plan updates. So the town council on July 16 approved the general plan updates. Right? They didn't have redlined versions of any of that at that meeting, nor did we previously to that as well. So I thought when the planning commission discussed the documents, I believe staff stated that the hazard mitigation plan would be attached to the safety element. So I mean, I, and I I mean, I, and I went online just to see what we have on the website as well as having a link to that. And in addition, the documents would be provided to the library to be included in the Fairfax section of their government documents. So I had some questions on that because I didn't see the mitigation plan as a part of the safety element, which is, I thought is what.
Yeah, we.
Staff had said.
We are in the process of putting that together. I'm having Bryn McKenna work on that. And so she's, she's putting that together. She's going to show me the, we're printing out a, getting a three-ring binder ready to make sure everything looks correct. And we're getting a website prepared to make that all looks correct. And then that's all going to go live. But it's, yeah, it is taking a little bit longer than we wanted, but we should be able to get that up hopefully by the end of the month or early next month.
Okay. And so we will have also hard copies for the library as well.
Yeah, yeah, that's the intent, is to have a few hard copies.
And as I was looking on the website, kind of as an aside, I saw that the glossary had been updated as well. So when you look at the glossary, everything, every page says amended July 16th on the glossary. When I compared the two, the only difference was that a definition of new development had been added to it. That section doesn't say that that was the only thing that was amended. So it looks like the entire glossary had been updated. But now we actually have two definitions in there of new development because that was already in the glossary. And we also have it referring to a land use map that's no longer the same land use map. So it refers to land use map four, which was previously the Fairfax planning area map, which when you look at the new land use element, that's the town center. So it's confusing in adding that one statement about new development in there that it makes the whole glossary confusing, added date to new development definitions. So I just wanted to mention that as an aside that it's, you know, and that's kind of one of the drawbacks of not having redlined documents to look at and compare. And I'm sure the town council was not aware of any of that as well or maybe hasn't even looked at those documents. So I just wanted to mention that. Thank you.
Chair?
Yes.
First off, I just want to say thank you, Commissioner Swift, for getting into that level of detail in your review because, thank you. And my question for Planning Director is, could you give us an update about, I don't know. I mean, I am, I should be paying closer attention, but there's been a second petition circulated that has something to do with the general plan. Are you aware of anything about that?
Yeah. In fact, there's a news item on that on our website right now.
Went up this afternoon.
Can you just give us, just for my benefit, a little update on what's happening?
There is a, a petition of Signature Drive to rescind the resolution that adopted the general plan changes. And so it was submitted and it was rejected by the town clerk because the petition was not legally adequate. So that's, so that's, the whole news is that it was rejected because it wasn't legally adequate.
Okay. Thank you.
Quickly, just wanted to thank the commissioners and the staff for patience as we resolved a very uncomfortable situation. Nobody was happy with this, with the circumstance. So, you know, don't look forward to these things, but glad we were able to somewhat resolve. And thanks for everyone's flexibility on September 4th. And then I had a request to the town staff, non-substantive on the item. I know special meeting agendas are only required to be posted 24 hours in advance if there's going to be a supplemental item with a little summary or explanation from the town attorney, if it's possible to get the agenda up a little earlier to the extent that the attorney doesn't have any issue with that. I'm sure that would be much, much appreciated.
We will try. Unfortunately, the, we have no power over the town attorneys.
Oh, yeah, yeah. No, I'm not expecting you to be able to tell them to give you an answer by Monday. But, but just if, if, you know, no need to wait until September 2nd at 6:00 PM to put the agenda up if it's otherwise ready to go.
And if applicable, if the applicant is going to change any of the sheets or drawings, then we would like to see those, of course.
Excuse me. Did we ask Tamara and Damian if they're free on September 4th? Is this your postponed only vacation of the year? What's going on?
No. I do believe I'm available September 4th. If I am not available that day, I do have a backup available for that day. I do try to have a backup in case something happens to me. But I do believe I'm available September 4th and I do appreciate you asking.
All right.
Always forget.
Okay. Anybody have anything else or a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Unanimous.